Meeting in order.
Commissioner Stover.
Here.
Commissioner Stover.
Here.
Commissioner Tweedy.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Present. Having opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Josh, would you like to?
Good Lord, I thank you for bringing us here tonight. I just ask that you be with us as we're making decisions for the city. And I just ask that you give the city commissioners wisdom as they're doing the actions that they can do. And if anybody needs to speak tonight, I just ask that you be with them to be able to speak clearly. We also want to take just a moment to thank you for our first responders. Grateful for them today, especially when we think about those fires in Los Angeles. Father, I just ask you to have a big, Jesus name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. In his love, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Having the additions or deletions?
Yes, Mayor, we do. So the additions would be under, uh, words and proclamations, item one would be a resolution honoring Charles Edward Chuck Watson, senior, for his lifelong dedication to faith, family, and community service in Arkansas City, Kansas, and unwavering dedication to improving the lives of others at the Northwest Community Center. And then under environmental services department, item number two, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into an agreement with Kuhn Mechanical for an emergency sewer main replacement under the BNSF railroad for an estimated amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars, and it's subject to some fee fluctuations. And then an amendment to an item on the agenda, the comprehensive fee schedule draft resolution to neighborhood service, a revision to neighborhood service fees to incorporate neglected buildings and demolition abatements.
Make a motion, we approve the additions to the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion approve, approve of the agenda.
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Words and proclamations. Make a motion or for a resolution honoring motion, excuse me, a motion for a resolution honoring Charles Edward Chuck Watson, senior, for his lifelong dedication to faith, family, and community service in Arkansas City, Kansas, and unwavering dedication to improving the lives of others at the Northwest Community Center. Second. Any discussion?
On that, uh, resolution, that's just, what, how's that?
So there was a request to do that prior to his funeral, and we were in our, uh, our tree, and I didn't, didn't get the message till this morning when I came in. So it was just a, you know, for his, for his family, just to kind of honor him for the service he did provide for the Northwest Community Center and the kids and.
Yeah, he did a wonderful job up there. Okay.
Sorry. No, you're fine. Anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Consent agenda.
I approve of January seventh, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting of the city. Item number two, rectify Mayor Chad Beeson's appointment at Falls Farm to the visit our city board of trustees and Travis Peernan to the planning commission and board of zoning of Falls Farm. Item number three is rectifying Mayor Chad Beeson's reappointment of Lloyd Colston and Katie Boyle to the Arkansas City Public Utilities Board. Tammy Langman Henderson to the Equal Work communities accessibility advisory board. Robin Henderson to the Northwest Community Center Advisory Board. Tammy Langman Henderson to the outstanding student award committee. Bobby Smith and Cuddy Richardson to the planning commission and board of appeals. And Carla Pike to the visit our city board.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. New business.
City manager department, item number one is an ordinance modifying municipal code section fifty dash two-two-seven concerning signs placed on public property and modifying zoning regulations article twenty-seven signs. Adapting such regulations for, adopting such regulations by reference and modifying municipal code as to the report.
The title of this item doesn't do it justice, uh, but I will explain, uh, what, what's going on. So the primary purpose of, of this item is actually concerning the billboard sign regulations in the city. So there was a case brought before the planning commission, uh, June, July timeframe, I think it was last year, for a billboard to be placed at the Billy Sims property. There was a lot of public outcry. I'm sure some of you were aware of that. But staff solicited some additional feedback from the public. We had an online poll that we used. And so that was, the, the public hearing was tabled. And it was brought back at the next meeting. They had these responses available to them. And ultimately, um, due to the public sentiment regarding this billboard that they would not recommend approval, the applicant subsequently withdrew their application, so it never came to the city commission. Now, the issue that I had as staff was that they met the regulations as were written. And so if we're going to not allow them to be presented in that manner, then we need to amend the regulations. So that's what I did. Uh, we went through the process of amending those regulations to better match what, what the sentiment of this, of the citizens were. Primarily, it involved making some adjustments to the size. So I'm just going to briefly talk about those changes. So one of the changes, one of the concerns was the height that was going to be presented. It was going to be about fifty feet tall. So we cut that in half. So now the tallest assigned billboard sign could be is twenty-five feet. And I got to be careful to say, um, yes, billboards are part of this, but there's also something called an off-premise sign.
What's the difference?
Technically the same thing. Uh, if you look at the definition of, I think it was, I should have wrote that down. One of those, I think it's a billboard, is the definition is an off-premise sign. An off-premise sign is a sign that represents something that isn't on the site. So like, for instance, at that site, the Billy Sims sign is an on-premise sign. And so it follows a different set of regulations than a billboard sign would follow. So when, when I approached the planning commission, you know, of course, there was probably some of them that were thinking, we should just eliminate this altogether. But then you would also outlaw any of those cases when there's a smaller size. So what this does is, of course, like I said, it decreases the height to twenty-five feet. It decreases the overall size. It was seven hundred and fifty square feet down to three hundred. And the important thing to also note about that is this is both, is all sides combined. So if it's a two-sided billboard, they can only have a hundred and fifty percent.
Each side.
So it, that actually is not as big even as you think it might be. I also noted that, this is the clarification, that billboard signs cannot have digital graphics. That that's not really a new thing. It's just a clarification. So they have to just be static images. They can't be flashing or anything. And finally, um, so there was a spacing element that was involved. So you could only put a, one of these within three hundred, or you had to be at least three hundred feet from a previous one. And I thought it may be appropriate to extend that, so we moved that up to eight hundred. And that's only one side of the street, so you could technically have it on the other side of the street, right across the street. But that's the way that regulation was written. As far as location allow, we didn't change that. So anywhere in the C-three, I-one, or I-two districts, uh, these are permitted. So.
So does this, does this not affect like the main signs that are given time, temperature, and?
No, those would be on-premise. So they have their own set of regulations.
Because the business is there, okay.
And those are, those are allowed and.
Right.
Yeah, all of them that we have currently, I believe, are fully compliant. So, oh, I was also going to mention that if that same company wanted to put a billboard sign at that location, they would still be allowed to. They would just have to meet these regulations.
The new, new regulations.
Yes, that they don't seem interested in that, but I just wanted to point that out that the location.
The planning commission went through that. I mean, they approved that, I mean.
Okay. Yeah, they had a public hearing in, uh, December. And that's where they voted to approve these amendments.
Okay, we, we had a controversy with signs on public property. Are we going to address that in the future? Larry, have you, I think you were working on that, weren't you?
We were. I think we had so many things come up, they got sidelined, but we can bring that back. I think we've kind of got a consensus on that, what we want to bring.
Really, the only place I see any need for them is in Paris, in Wilson Park. The rest of the places, we, we don't need them. Something along the lines of if they've got an event going on there, they would be allowed to. Anybody else couldn't do it. To narrow it down. I don't, I, I don't know.
I think we have to have a big discussion.
I, I was gonna say, I would agree because I like you, Charles, but just because you or I think that maybe that's not there. The person that wants to put it there might say, well, it's my right and.
Yeah. So.
You have to identify that it has to be a function there.
That's happening there, correct.
I think Larry needs to spend some time.
We just need to bring it back to you guys. We spent the time on it. It just got sidelined.
It's a long time on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was, I mean, we did extensively talk about it, the two of us in particular, and it just isn't as simple as changing what's already there. We need to talk to you guys, yeah. I guess I should also add, I didn't talk about this. So we did, uh, change a section in municipal code regarding, um, public, or signs on public property. So right now, the, there's a provision in fifty dash two-two-seven that pretty much says that public signage is not allowed at all on public property. What I did was I added just a little statement on there that says, um, except what is found in the zoning regulations. There is a couple of little minor things. Mostly it has to do with signage that, that the government body approves to be placed there. Or that you place there as staff. There's, so there's, it's really, it, it clarifies that a little bit, and it hopefully will help us when we change the ordinance a little bit to, we may, it'd depend where we end up putting those exceptions to, or that policy, if it's in zoning or if it's a separate ordinance. That's the only thing I've found that would do anything to our current regulation.
Well, that being said, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, uh, that ordinance modifying the municipal code section fifty days two-two-seven concerning signs placed on public property, modifying zoning regulations, article twenty-seven, signs adopting such regulations by reference and modifying the municipal code to so reflect.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
Who was the second?
I do.
I'm hearing first.
Okay, um, further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Real call.
Oh, I'm sorry, real call.
Commissioner Spillman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Basin?
Yes.
Okay.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to file an application with the Historic Preservation Fund grant administered by the National Park Service for a national register nomination revising the downtown Arkansas City Commercial District.
So in two thousand seventeen, the city applied for a similar, well, the same grant, it's just a different project. And at that time, we did a survey of the entire district. And out of that survey, and it was published in two thousand eighteen, out of that survey, there's some recommendations, um, about some expansions in some places and some retractions of the district in other places. So retractions were where some buildings were torn down. We just want to remove them, so there's not any undue regulation for those properties anymore. The additions, um, are include some buildings that are kind of on the edge of the district that, um, would probably benefit from a little bit of protection. There's some debate about whether we would add all of those or not. I think that's a conversation that I'll have with a consultant when it comes time for that, about the ones that we want to pursue. Ultimately, the property owners have to consent to being added. This also included a couple of, or is three city properties, including this building. I, it just baffles me that even in nineteen eighty-three, that this building was left off of the district. I imagine there was probably some sort of political pressure, one way or the other, but I don't know. I don't have any evidence of that. But I don't know exactly what happened there. But I think this building in particular is really important for us to make sure that we're following those guidelines, especially when we're asking our downtown merchants to follow, we'll just follow through with that. So this would be a building that would be added. So this grant, um, would be for the consultant to come in and assist us with this process. We probably could do it without a consultant, but it would be difficult. It's definitely outside of my expertise. So they recommend that we hire a consultant, so that was, that's what the grant's for. I attempted to get some estimates for what that project would cost and didn't have a whole lot of luck. And so I am applying, I'm proposing to apply for twenty-five thousand dollars to hire this consultant. However, I feel that's probably on the high end. But it does, that does give us a little wiggle room if we, uh, if we need it. I would anticipate it's probably closer to fifteen or even maybe a little lower than that. It is a matching grant where the city would have to contribute forty percent match. However, most of that can be in, and actually, all of it can be in in-kind services. When we did the survey grant, the city didn't actually pay any cash. We used volunteer labor. We used my labor. In fact, we even used some, uh, their support staff labor to count. So we didn't have to do that. And I think there may have been a little balance, but because we are a certified local government, the National Park Service requires the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, to, uh, send, I think it's ten percent of their funding to certify the whole government. So they usually, it's, it's unusual for a grant program to have extra money, but they usually do. They have more funding than they can give out, so they are looking for ways to, to do that. And so they're willing to make up for any gap that we would have in that. So it's unlikely that we will have to pay anything at all in cash. And it, it's not budgeted, so that would be a good thing if we don't have to do that. I would, I would ask for your support in, in applying for this grant. And this resolution also, uh, basically consents to those city properties being a part of that program. So we get that out of the way.
Well, that would come, that would come after the study, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they would still have to review it. The two properties besides city hall would be police department property and, uh, Ben Givens Park. Ben Givens Park doesn't have any buildings in it, so that's not really a big deal. The police department is not, would not be contributing to the district, but they would technically be subject to those regulations. I don't see any huge problems with that. I don't think they have any major plans that would alter it.
They have to put in steel bars and this stuff again and on the side and the back and. I'm not against that.
No, I, I don't see anything happening. It could potentially benefit the park. I don't know exactly how many, how grants work with parks, but I don't know, there may be something. But for this building, the good, the good thing that comes out of this program would be we would be eligible for those state tax credits. So I, I know Tony talked on Friday about the roof on this building needing to be replaced. That would be eligible for this program. I don't think we're going to get it into the program fast enough for that to happen, but it would have been an eligible project.
We can put it off next year, couldn't we?
Those.
It'll get rain.
Twenty-five percent of the value.
Yeah.
So, and then we would just sell our credits to, you know, one of the local banks or something. And that's how we'd get our money.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the city of Arkansas City to file an application for Historic Preservation Fund grant administered by the National Park Service for the National Registry Nomination's revising the downtown Arkansas City Commercial District.
Second.
Hey. Josh, how long did that survey take to take?
It probably take a couple of months. Um, this project would be closed out, actually in two thousand twenty-six.
Okay.
And so probably the summer, we'll look at, of course, I've got to apply for it first and actually receive it. But probably this summer, we would look at having a consultant come in and start doing that work.
So how long would it take, once we get all that stuff done, we, we have it done?
Probably late this year into next year.
Okay.
And just keep in mind that all we're going tonight is applying.
Applying.
Okay. Any other further comments? Any more conversation? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that one of the voice? Oh, it's the voice, okay. All right, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Item number three is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into an agreement, into agreement number eight-eight-four dash two-four with Smith and Oaks Incorporated in the Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, for federal aid construction engineering services for hike bike trail project number eighteen TE dash zero four seven one dash oh one.
So what this does is enters, uh, enters an agreement with the city of Arkansas City, Smith and Oaks, and the Department of Transportation to do the construction inspection, um, on the hike bike trail that's, that's coming up here in March, June timeframe. The cost of it's already been, uh, included into the, the original agreement that we passed a, a month or two ago for, for the actual trail itself. So, um, that, that part's been taken care of. It's a, uh, participating cost. The, the hundred, it's a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's included already in that budget for the agreement that we passed here recently, so. So all we're, all we're doing is just saying that, that we're gonna.
This is picking somebody, basically.
Selecting Smith and Oaks to do the, do the work, yeah.
This is the extension from Paris Park to the south end, connect to the, the trail.
Correct.
I move that we approve a resolution authorizing city of Arkansas City enter into agreement number eight-eight-four dash two-four with Smith and Oaks, Inc. And the Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, for federal aid construction engineering services for the hike bike trail project number eighteen TE oh four seven one oh one.
Second.
Okay, voice votes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Item number four is a resolution adopting by reference the city's twenty twenty-five comprehensive fee schedule and repealing resolution twenty twenty-four oh eight three six four ones.
And this was just basically during the work session, Mike said, hey, I forgot to add this, and so we're adding it.
So yes, there was, um, a revision done to it, to add, um, the neglected buildings. And then we also added demolition abatement fees, which wasn't originally in there. So we incorporated those into the neighborhood service department. Other changes that were previously done to the original draft included, um, adding environmental services fees, which were originally under the public services department. So we took those out, and by doing that, we classified it our, our water meter and sewage, um, utility rates. So those were in the right department. Um, and then public services, water utility, um, the general fees, and then the sanitation schedules. We forecasted that rate out to twenty twenty-nine. And so instead of keep coming back every year and updating this, it's already there. It's transparent. The public can see it. We can see it. So it just makes it a lot easier. I had the pleasure of working with Teresa Watts, and then Jennifer and Teresa actually reformatted the entire comp fee schedule for us. So I was very thankful that she put the time and injury, energy into that. So, um, I think it looks really good. And the neat thing is when we convert it to Adobe now, the table contents, you'll be able to click on a section, and it'll take you right to the page. So it'll be a lot better working document than we have before.
Great. Then I make a motion for a resolution adopting by reference the city's twenty twenty-five comprehensive fee schedule and repealing resolution number twenty twenty-four oh eight three six four one.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
You know, the neglected buildings, is that vacant buildings or property that needs maintenance to it?
Both.
It's defined in that ordinance, but you're not.
Okay.
So that was adopted in November. It's commercial and residential buildings.
Okay. And how, do we send out notices telling they owe us twenty-five dollars for not maintaining their building? How are we gonna do that?
I think Mike's working on that process to notify the, the property owners, and that's a tricky thing if they're tied into a trust to locate. So it's a, a matter of getting, getting with the, the realtors or the county or however he's gonna go about that. But there, there is an application and, yeah, a process.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, please.
Yep.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, um, environmental services, item number one, is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into a letter of agreement with Burns and McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated to provide professional engineering services for the water treatment plant chloride discharge review for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Even, even an honorable mayor and members of the commission bring it forward, when I enter into an agreement with Burns and McDonald to discuss the chloride issue down at the wastewater plant that we're having. And we're gonna utilize them to locate the cause of it and provide solutions to that as well, as well as KDHE looks favorably upon an engineer's opinion whenever we're dealing with these types of things. Partially, some reason why I bring them on.
So even if we could figure out the problem and do it, we would still have to get these, just to satisfy KDHE.
Or even if we already knew what the problem was.
Okay.
We don't have a clue what the problem is?
Uh, yeah, we do have a partial clue. It's usually, I think, part of the water plants affluent, that it's coming from it, heading straight down to the wastewater plant. It's causing it to be a little bit higher. And we're working with them to try to find solutions to that.
Just something that just appeared, or we know, have we been following it for a while?
Uh, KDHE brought this to our attention a little while ago. We've been working on it since then.
Okay.
It's probably something to the source water at the water plant that's.
Swell. Yeah, from the wells.
Probably drought related, but.
I was gonna say, that's why we're bringing them on, to help us find the actual source of it.
Well, if it's drought related, you know, down the road, I mean, would that be a, I mean, uh, can't they work with us on that? I mean.
Well, that, and that's why we really, we've got to prove what.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
We, we believe we know what it is, but until you have an engineer saying that's what it is, KDHE is not gonna accept it.
I agree, yeah.
I assume this was not budgeted for and foreseen.
This was actually budgeted for.
Cause we probably found out it was about in September or October and tried working on it and then. So.
Yeah.
Last year.
And we've been working on this with them, just with that out, with the assumption that the agreement was coming. So they've been, uh, well, part of the, um, application for the green sand filter grant, um, that was held up for a little bit because of this issue, and, and so we've been working with them to get, so we've got that moving again. Basically, they could show that the, the, that additional green sand filter isn't really going to cause any more issues with this, and it's really unrelated, so.
Other way, and definitely helped us make sure we got that secured.
Gotcha. Well, that being said, I make a motion, a resolution authorizing city of Arkansas City to enter to a letter agreement with Burns and McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated to provide professional engineering services for the water treatment plant chloride discharge review for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into an agreement with Coon Mechanical for an emergency sewer main replacement under the BNSF Railway for an estimated amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars, subject to fee fluctuations.
Uh, give a little background to that. Uh, a while back, until last year, we discovered that we had a sewer main that was backing up underneath the railroad. And we finally managed to get it cleared up and we got a camera under there just to find that the line was collapsing, unfortunately, underneath the railroad. And that's why we're having to bring in an outside contractor to help us with that. Cause the railroad becomes sticklers whenever you start messing with anything underneath there.
So how many feet we got replaced with that line?
I'm not sure at the moment, I can't find that information.
I thought it was like three twenty-seven.
Yeah, three forty-seven.
Three forty-seven? I remember the seven.
Slightly less than three hundred fifty.
Right.
Whatever extends underneath the railroad.
Sure.
Is this a tile pipe or?
Yeah, this is clay pipe underneath the railroad.
So what are we gonna replace with?
It would probably HDPE.
How big a line, twelve?
It's a fifteen inch line.
And that's what's in there right now?
Yep, we'll be replacing it and, uh.
So how you gonna tie that, how you gonna tie that up, you tie it together with the clay on the other side? I mean, how you?
Uh, they use what's called the frontco's, which is basically just a rubber sleeve that slips on to the clay and then some can slip on to the.
And it holds pretty good?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
It's a mall over sewer system.
But that won't be underneath the railroad tracks, it'll be on the other side of it. So in other words, if something happens, we don't have to go through that railroad thing. I mean, we'll just fix it on either side?
Yeah, like Randy just mentioned, they'll be redoing the line completely. So they'll be doing it properly where they'll be drilling a whole new line, putting casing around it, new pipe. And then they'll put two frontco's to reattach the line on either side.
And so that funding will be coming out of our sewer fund?
Yes.
Does that pipe handle most of the north part of the city?
A good portion of it. Uh, it handles more from, I would say about Kansas to Madison, that area.
Okay.
Uh, there are a lot of people involved in that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I move that we authorize city of Arkansas City to enter into agreement with Coon Mechanical for emergency sewer main replacement under the BNSF Railroad or Railway for an estimated amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two, subject to fee fluctuations.
Second.
Okay, question on fees fluctuation, what's that mean?
Well, they're, they're estimating some, some costs with permitting and stuff with the railroad. So there could be some changes there. And then there could be a few things that, uh.
Could it be less?
Could be less, but probably not.
We're dreaming of.
But there, um, there could be some fluctuations in fees that they don't, that, that they don't anticipate. Um, and there could be some other issues that might pop up that, just because it's kind of like remodeling an old house once you start.
Prickin' till you just know what you're gonna have.
No, the only concern, I, I'm glad we're using Coon, a local person. Um, my only concern is we've just got, because it's an emergency, we're just having one person look at it. And I, not, not that I think that they would intentionally, but if someone could do it for a better price, we don't know if we can get that. And I know it's an emergency and so it's kind of puts us in a bind.
And what complicates this one is, is working with the railroad. And Coon had, Coon had a relationship with some folks at the railroad that could keep that part moving. Cause that's, that does slow down a project a lot and, uh, and so that was a big piece of this.
It does help then, okay. Okay.
Can they still have equipment here?
Uh, I believe they're gonna have to bring in that piece of equipment for this one because it's such a specialized project.
Thank you all. We had a, we had a motion, we had a second, we had further discussion. If everybody's ready, we'll take a vote. Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Fire EMS.
Item number one is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to purchase nine APX eight thousand all brand portable radios in compliance with Kansas State Interoperable Communication Systems, eight hundred megahertz radios for Motorola Solutions for an amount not to exceed sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and ten cents excluding shipping.
So unfortunately, uh, by the way, good afternoon, Commissioner Mayor. Uh, unfortunately, this was a unfunded mandate from the federal government. Uh, so we weren't looking at too much help. Uh, when it originally started, we knew somewhere around two thousand and six that all this stuff was gonna be coming down. But it was mainly pushed towards law enforcement for, uh, making sure encryption was to safeguard private information. Uh, the ambulance service uses eight hundred radios quite a bit when we're giving personal information to hospitals, but it never really had to be encrypted. Um, it is coming down the pipe. Uh, it was actually put into effect in twenty-two, requiring local and state agencies to gain the capability. As of right now, our radios are four hundred and so it's just a UHF. So we, we will still continue to use the four eight, uh, the four hundred UHF for around our area. Um, typically on structure fires, automatic aid, mutual aid coming in. Um, being that we have to use the state radios if we go outside, uh, Sumner County or, uh, and any one of the other ones that we might have to go to, uh, KDOT controls those towers. And since the state of Kansas with their interoperable, uh, it's easier just to say the KSICS, they're at eight hundred megahertz. And so we can't use our four hundred on them. So in order to stay in compliance with what the state is saying as well, we have to have a dual band. And then we also have to have the ability for encryption. Uh, we were able to get away with just doing the nine because it wasn't pushed too hard on the medical side and the fire side. But as we keep going, it's, it's common.
That's kind of a silly question, but our nine oh one center, do what kind of, are they the same thing what we're doing or?
Yeah, everybody's gonna have to be in compliance sooner or later. The, the weird thing about it was, and this is why we didn't, I don't think a lot of people acted too much because every time it was brought up, the state of Kansas says, as long as you're working on this, then we'll push back another year. And then, so everybody kept saying, well, we're working on it and then it got pushed back another year. And then it kept pushed back another year and then sooner or later, it's just gonna be.
When nobody's really working on it, then they call your bluff.
Yes, yeah. And that's where we're at right now. Like I said, it was pushed into mandate at twenty-two. Uh, we should have been in compliance with it, but we have not been. So the nine radios for the fire station will allow us to go ahead and do that and be in compliance.
Randy, where's the funding come from this?
It was budget, this, this was already budgeted, yeah, we, we talked about it after the budget here.
Budget makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
Well, that being said, I make the resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to purchase nine APX eight thousand all brand portable radios in compliance with the Kansas State Inter.
Interoperable.
Yeah, interoperable, uh, communication systems, KSICS, eight hundred MHZ radios for Motorola Solutions for an amount not to exceed sixty-seven thousand, seven fifteen ten, including shipping.
Second.
Excluding shipping.
Excluding shipping, I'm sorry.
Is Motorola the best one out there?
How can I put this?
Frankly.
Yeah, okay, well, I can't think much, but when everything you have is already Motorola, if we move to a different system, then we have to start buying different batteries, we have to start buying different chargers. In that case, it ends up costing us more in the long term. So by keeping everything the same, which is a good brand that you know about sometime, it's just cheaper in the long run.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. City manager updates.
Okay. Uh, so tomorrow, Commissioner Warren and myself will be going to Topeka to the LKM Local Government Day. So we'll keep you posted on what we learn there. We, we do plan on meeting with Senator Alley and hopefully Representative Riley while we're there. Um, on the twenty-third, I'm gonna participate in a, a meeting with, uh, city manager Winfield and Juice, uh, Jessica Falk at the County Economic Development. Um, looking at updating our housing study that was done. Um, I think the original was done in like twenty fourteen, there was an update in twenty nineteen. And so we're looking at updating it again, uh, since the housing market's been so changed after COVID. So, uh, we'll, uh, we have a proposal on that and.
So who's, is somebody gonna help you on that or?
Yeah, we have a consultant that did, did the original and then the update.
Oh, he's coming back?
Yeah. And that would be split three ways most likely on the cost or, but I'll keep you posted on that. Um, in your, uh, on your tables there, um, there is a house called Housing Trap Tour um, in Wichita on the twenty-eighth, if you're interested, it's, I think it's, uh, information on the, the housing market and kind of what's going on with, with housing in the, uh, region. So I want you to be aware of that if you were interested in going and there's a little bit of background there as well. Then.
Is that Tuesday or Wednesday?
It is a it's the twenty-eighth, I'll have to look at my calendar here real quick. Wednesday, yeah. That's evening.
It'll be Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay. It's in the evening at, uh, five, it starts at five and it's at the Kansas Leadership Center there in downtown Wichita. And, uh, just reminder that on the thirty-first, then Rod, Philo and Tommy Bowman have their retirement party from one thirty to three at the water treatment facility, so.
When is that?
Uh, it's on the thirty-first, Friday, uh, from one thirty to three at the water treatment plant. And then there is a, on February eleventh, there is, uh, an LKM training online. It's called, uh, managing disruptions of public meetings. So it might be, if you're interested in attending that, it's online, uh, through the league. So, uh, you know, those things happen occasionally and there's kind of maybe some ways to help deal with that, so.
Is there a cost to that or we just log in?
There is a cost to it, you know. I think it was twenty-five dollars.
Is that the training I got a receipt for today?
No, oh, yes it is, yeah, yeah. And you could probably, uh, I, I signed up, um, to, uh, for it, so we could probably just share the screen in there.
Okay.
What was it, eight of the?
Eleven.
Two eleven.
Yeah, I thought I put a copy of that in there, but.
Yeah, there is, there is.
Okay.
From eleven to twelve.
Okay. Um, another training opportunity is, so we're part of the local government network. It's, uh, WSU has, um, through the Public, uh, Policy Management Center, different trainings for, um, elected official staff. Um, and so in your packet, there is one coming up. You, um, you all got a book here recently, The Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community. And, uh, WSU, they did this last year, but they're gonna come back with it again. They're gonna have a, a six, uh, hour online session with that book. Um, just, and just kind of work through it and, uh, as a group and, you know. And obviously, we know that the six ways to kill a community is, is just the opposite. It's the six ways that help make a community better. So, um, anyway, if you're interested in, in participating in that, um, that'll be coming up soon. And, uh, it'd be an online thing that you can do, uh, on your own or we can do it together if, if you like. And we were notified that we did not, uh, receive the CBDG grant for Wilson Park this year. And that was for playground equipment and the splash pad. Um, we did budget a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for playground equipment in the budget and we were using that for some of the match. So, um, the plan is that we would move forward with that hundred and thirty thousand and, and replace some equipment in Wilson Park. So we'll still be doing some improvements in Wilson Park. It just wouldn't be to the grand scale that the grant would have allowed us to do. Uh, I'm also, in your packet is, uh, the updates from PEC on the projects that we're working on with them. So I don't know if there's anything particularly, uh, high level there at this point, other than we're still working through things, so. And then, um, there was a question at the retreat the other day about, uh, the rec, the pool, pool, um, usage. So there's a report that the Rec Commission provides, um, with the twenty twenty-four, uh, numbers and it goes back to twenty twenty, so you can compare. So that information's in there for you. And then finally, I would, uh, point out the, the financial summary in the back of the packet. Make sure you take a look at that, uh, I think everything's looks, looks pretty good there, but that was the, the year-to-date summary, of course, it's not the audited numbers yet, it was just, um, numbers from, from our financial, um, software, so, uh, ended pretty well this year. Uh, what cash balance and general fund was, was over, well, three point three million dollars and that's, so it was looking pretty good, so.
That's unbelievable, we've never had that before, I can never remember.
Yeah, and, uh, totaling the cash balance was eighteen, eighteen million. So pretty good shape financially, uh.
It gives what, about four months, that, you know? They, they figure, you know, if you can get one or two months, we're, we're way ahead of that.
Yeah. And, you know, with the, with the PBC bond, uh, we're required to keep certain cash balances and so that keeps us in pretty good shape there. We're, we're meeting those requirements well and we're.
Well, well, well above their, their threshold.
So that's all I've got.
North Summit Street repaving from radio lane to skyline, is that still in the works?
So, uh, we didn't, we weren't awarded that grant this year, but we'll reapply for it.
We need that bad.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a very expensive stretch of road there and, uh, I, we, I don't know how we deal with that, we have to have a grant.
Oh, yeah.
But, but we'll keep trying. Um, those are competitive and, um, so we'll, we'll tweak the grant next year.
But every other year, we get one of those, I mean.
Yeah, pretty much. You know, we, we've got a, a C-Club grant that we were awarded that should be going on out here. From eighth to the bridge this summer. Um, so, yeah, we'll just keep, keep going and at some point our, we'll get the lucky number and it'll be our turn.
Can we look into restriking that?
Yeah, I believe, uh, I think Tony was gonna look at doing that, so.
Okay.
The item for discussion by commissioners? I had a big one. Um, so, since we've met last, it snows. And for some reason and somehow, the city was able to sanitation in six degree weather, negative twelve degree weather, everybody's trash got taken out. I've worked on the back of those trucks, that is the worst time of the year to do it. It's either when it's, it's that cold.
One hundred and ten degrees.
Or a hundred and ten degrees and somebody had barbecue. So, uh, so I just wanted to, to thank sanitation personally for that. And then I, I came to defense of our street department. Um, I know the roads cannot be cleared nearly as quickly as we'd like. I did some math and right or wrong, you've got two lanes on most roads. Some of them are four lanes. I had a guesstimate of about three hundred and fifty square miles or three hundred and fifty miles that needed to be cleared. We have three trucks, that's a hundred and, hundred and twenty miles of truck. And they've got to, um, take into consideration that the snow's still coming down. So they've got to clinker, keep the, the main arteries clear, they've got to keep emergency routes clear. We had men that were out, I know because I was out and I saw them and I talked to them. We had men that were out working at nine, ten o'clock at night and then at four AM, they were back up clearing streets. So, so the street department, I want to say thank you. Water department, I don't know if you guys had any breaks during that time?
They had one today.
Today. But I can tell you right now, I've been to, I, when I, when I'd go and, and watch these men when they were working there, there is no place you wanna be in freezing weather, they're getting sprayed in the face and getting, yes, sir.
The water department, the police department, Westside Building froze up water lines immediately.
Uh-huh.
And we, uh, on call water department, gentleman came out and helped us out.
What time was that?
That was yesterday morning.
So that was what, that was.
On, on time off, they were, they were here working. Yeah. But I can't think of anything in freezing weather to be being sprayed in the face and working in that and trying to, trying to get a, a water main under control. So thank you to the water department. Um, police, I'm sure that the accidents are, go way up during that time.
I had a few, I had that. We had four from some of the main intersections yesterday, four accidents.
Um, just people probably driving too fast and so that's just, that's just more, more of a burden on you guys. And, and I'm sure when it happens, people are ticked off as, when they get there to begin with. So thank you to the police department. Um, I know that the fire department had three structure fires in the last couple of weeks. And those are probably specifically where people were doing heaters or wiring went bad. I'm, I'm not gonna go into too much on what one it was, but um, and so um, again, it might be a little warmer there, but it's also slick. It's nasty and it's probably not any fun fighting those fires during that time either. So thank you guys as well. Um, the only people I'm leaving off is the park department, but I know with my buddy Connie Moore and his, his, his crew, that if they were needed, all they'd have to get is a phone call and those men would be there to help as well. So um, I know that, that the city takes a lot of slack for what they don't do. But I want the city to know that, that we see what they do do and we're grateful for them. And I believe that citizens should be thankful for what they get as well from the city. So thank you.
Lean into that.
Yeah, this snow was a little deceptive. No more than there was, it got slick fast.
Yeah.
They've uh, they're called one as an producer of Stanley, the running, he worked for me ten calls a day and they're running all hours of the night.
Just because of the cold?
I have, I'm not gonna blame it on just the cold. It's just people's lifestyles, but the cold doesn't make a little bit more difficult on people running out, driving conditions that they're running and all hours of the night, you know, just the kids are doing it a little.
I didn't mean to leave anybody out. I just, those are the guys that I worked with and knew about and. Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, chief. That's all I have.
Why move me adjourn?
Oh, is there any public comment? Jim? All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I did that.
Second. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, opposed. Motion carries.